What were they here for? Oh. Yes. Matt Preventer's on Zoom.
So it's your other one?
Yes.
All right, good evening. Before we begin, this is a reminder that this is also a remote meeting and teleconference using Zoom pursuant to one MRSA Section 43-A. Welcome to the Sanford Planning Board Meeting of February 19th, 2025. The meeting will now come to order. This is a public proceeding, and unless the board specifically votes to go into executive session, you have the right to hear everything that is being said and look at all the exhibits that are offered. Please notify the chair if you're unable to hear or see something. Please know that if any planning board members have potential conflicts of interest, of which they are aware, they will disclose the conflict prior to the board initiating a hearing or action on an application. All persons speaking will be asked to state your name and address and then proceed. At the sole discretion of the chair, public testimony may be limited to five minutes per speaker. Each item the applicant will be asked to describe the project thereafter. The chair will ask for proponents of the project to speak, followed by opponents, and then those who are neither for nor against but may want to ask a question or make a general comment. Everyone who wants will have an opportunity to speak to the board through the chair. Any question must go to and through the chair, who will then decide at what point to either ask staff or the applicant to respond. The chair may wait until after testimony is concluded to seek answers to any questions that are raised by the public or board members. Please note that rudeness, uncivil behavior, clapping, cheering, booing, etc. will not be tolerated, and if these behaviors occur, the chair at its sole discretion may terminate the hearing and reschedule for another date. In addition, the chair at its sole discretion will limit repetitious comments, though it is entirely appropriate for an individual to indicate that he or she agrees with the previous speaker. Prior to closing the public hearing, the chair will ask if there are any new comments, and the applicant will be allowed to make a single rebuttal in response to the testimony which was provided. Once the public hearing portion of the meeting is closed, the chair will accept no additional public comment. However, a member of the board at the chair's discretion may ask the applicant or a member of the public to respond to a question. This will not reopen public comment. Planning board decisions are based solely on whether an applicant has provided sufficient evidence to meet the requirements of the local, state, and federal laws. In this regard, public testimony is most effective when it considers the impact of a project in light of Sanford subdivision site plan, shoreland, or zoning ordinances, and other relevant regulations. After the board discusses the merits of each project, it will vote on written findings of facts. Since the findings may substantially affect any appeals rates, and also as a matter of courtesy, the board asks those attending the meeting not leave until the board has adopted the findings for the project you are interested in. After the planning board makes its final decision, any reconsideration by the board must be made at the next regularly scheduled meeting. If anyone wishes to appeal the board's final decision, he or she must do so within 30 days. The city's ordinances and comprehensive plan are available for viewing on the city's website and in the Planning Development Department's office in 919 Main Street. Remember that this is a public hearing, public proceeding. You have the right to hear and see what is happening, and we welcome public participation. Okay, so the first item filed 2025-09-J3047-PES, Sanford Housing Authority is still remaining on the table. Next item is new business, file number 2025-TAC-07-TAC-R18-TAC-16-TAC-AD, Sanford Regional Airport, minor site plan. Could you orient us on this, please?
Yes, good evening. This project went before the Site Plan Review Committee two weeks ago. It came out of site plan with just a few minor requests from staff. They have updated the ones that they were able to, so we are going to come out of a suggested motion with a couple conditions allowing them time to finish up a few minor issues. It's for a 6,400-square-foot aircraft hangar and a small amount of parking. It's, I believe, one parking spot next to the hangar, so this is a smaller development than some of the more recent hangars we've seen. Well done, set of plans.
All right, thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening. I'm Craig Burdis with Acorn Engineering. I'm here tonight on behalf of J&amp;J Whitney Property. Paco Construction is doing the building, the general contractor. Ethan can answer any questions tonight if there are questions about the building. Ethan from Paco is here to help out. The project is a 6,400-square-foot hangar, and it's really just for the storage and washing, just general washing of one airplane inside that hangar. There could be multiple airplanes, but they're limited on size. The total square footage of impervious area is roughly 13,100, so it's a pretty simple site layout. It is proposing to connect into public sewer and water, as well as three-phase electric, which is available there along Presidential Lane, and Unitil has natural gas available. So in 2019, Presidential Lane was approved to serve like three general development areas. This project is in General Development Area 1, and so part of Presidential Lane, and we looked at future expansion here, and it was intended for expansion of hangars, new hangars, such as what's in front of you tonight. So this project fits in very well with the airport's long-term goals for development, especially in this area of the airport. There's other hangars already that have either come in front of the board or have been constructed, and this is very similar in nature to those hangars. It has direct access to taxiway Charlie, so we tried to bring it up close so that the airplane has easy access. There's a bifold door facing the taxiway, and then there's also a doorway on the north side, which is planned left, and then the main access doorway, which is on the west side at the bottom of the screen, adjacent to the one parking space. Stormwater-wise, as part of the Presidential Lane expansion, it did include a pretty robust stormwater system. It involved four focal points that intend to provide water quality runoff, and that runoff goes across the street to a bigger detention pond. So the stormwater was completely handled back in 2019, and that was also approved by Maine DEP as well as the city. So this fits in well, this fits within the parameters of what was previously approved. So tonight, we're looking for the planning board to approve this project so that the project can start construction sometime in the springtime. And with that, I'll leave it open to the planning board with any comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does staff have anything to add before we open public hearing?
I have just one comment when Craig is up here. In the process of doing the findings of fact this afternoon, I realized that there wasn't any talk about how they're going to be removing their trash, their solid waste. Do you know how the owner of the property intends to remove their solid waste?
Yeah, we did have a discussion about it. It's going to be very, very minimal, so any trash that is brought to this building will be brought off-site with the owner.
Like a carry-in, carry-out type of thing?
Okay.
Is that it? All right, we'll declare the public hearing open. Is there anybody who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance or this project? Oh, opposition for, sorry. Anybody who wants to speak in opposition? Any proponents who would like to speak in favor of this project? Any general questions or comments? Any final opportunity to speak your piece? Okay, declare the public hearing closed. Pick it up for a planning board discussion.
Matt Preventer is on Zoom if you have any questions related to the stormwater or anything.
Great, thank you. Anything from the board?
Other than everything I've looked at, it seemed to fit into what we've been talking about, and I have no objections to what I've seen and the comments that I've seen so far from everyone else prior to us seeing it tonight.
All right, so do we have findings?
I was just going to say, this is a good example of a project that you would no longer see in the future after we update the airport ordinance.
Right, there's not a lot of gray. Or any.
It's a hangar on an airport.
Correct.
Okay, so do we have draft findings?
We do. Before we go to the draft findings, I just want to let you guys know the few items that came out of site plan. One of them is to submit verification from the FAA. Another one is to submit a letter from the Kennybunk Wells Water District to, because it's in the Branch Brook Aquifer, they have reached out to both. They're just awaiting their responses. A third one, there was a note coming out of site plan from the Water District, which Craig did try to solve, but the Water District has requested an update of language, so they put on it that it will meet city standards. They wanted to specifically say domestic water service connection will meet the Sanford Water District standards, terms, and conditions. So I put that as a condition. And then finally, the airport manager requested an ASBelt plan for this project once it's complete, because there's so much development happening in a tight area. She asked for ASBelt so that in future, when another hangar on either side of them expands or constructs, they know exactly where everything is. So those will be the four conditions that I request during the suggested motion.
Those all make sense to me.
Okay, great, so we'll start in on the findings of fact. 280-16-7A, utilization of the site, the standard is met because the proposed site plan reasonably uses the site.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Five zero.
280-16-7N, solid waste disposal. This condition is met because the solid waste is proposed to be collected on-site and removed by a private contractor or the owner.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five zero.
280-16-7P, shoreline relationship, the standard is not applicable. The applicant is not proposing any development, the standard is not applicable.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five zero.
280-16-7Q, technical and financial capacity, the standard is met because the applicant has demonstrated adequate technical and financial capacity.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five zero.
Okay, great. For Chapter 280, Article 16, Subsection 7B, access to the site, 7C, access into the site, 7D, internal vehicular circulation, and 7E, pedestrian circulation, these standards are met because the development will not create hazards to vehicular or pedestrian traffic.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five zero.
Group two, Chapter 280, Article 16, Subsection 7F, stormwater management, 7G, erosion control, 7H, water supply, 7I, sewage disposal, 7J, utilities, 7K, natural features, 7L, groundwater protection, 7M, exterior lighting, 7O, landscaping, 7R, buffering, and 7S, airport encroachment. These standards are met because the applicant has provided adequate provisions to meet the standards.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five zero.
And I do also have a suggested motion.
Great.
The planning board accepts the information in the February 4th, 2025 summer report and February 19th, 2025 Site Plan Review Committee recommendation to the planning board, grant the requested waivers, and find that major site plan application number 2025-07-R18A-16-AD to construct a 6,400-square-foot aircraft hangar and other certain improvements has satisfied the requirements of Article 16 of the zoning ordinance, subject to the following conditions. By March 19th, 2025, unless other arrangements are made with the planning department, provide five copies of revised plans and adequately respond to issues raised in review, which are part of the following conditions of approval. A, submit verification on an obstruction evaluation from OEA AAA to the Sanford Airport Manager with the aeronautical study number and determination of no hazard. B, submit letter from KKW Water District approving the use within the Branch Brook watershed. C, update sheet C20 where the water service enters the building to say two-inch domestic water service connection will meet the Sanford Water District standards, terms, and conditions. And then D, provide an ASBelt plan at the completion of the construction to the airport manager. And then two, standard conditions of approval, number two, performance guarantee, number six, inspection fiasco, number seven, pre-construction meeting, and number nine, alteration of plans.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five zero.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Okay, so moving on to the proposed revision to airport development zone, proposed ordinance to revision to 280-TAC-11-TAC-9.
Okay, apologies on the late addition to the packet for this ordinance. I was away on vacation last week and should be available for you in your packet now, but I will also pull it up here, and it's up to you guys if we want to make any revisions, bring it back again, or pass it forward for City Council.
You didn't write this when you were on vacation, did you?
No, I wrote it three hours ago, Jack.
She wrote it from 2:00 to 5:30.
Well, we had a cookie social, so I was, you know, high blood sugar. We were tearing through it. So as we discussed, the main changes are to the review authority for projects within the airport sub-district, the AD Airport Subdistrict, as projects are already pre-approved and shown on the Ultimate Airport Layout Plan, which is then also approved by the Federal Aviation Administration. So there are a couple of just minor text cleanups throughout as well, but I will kind of skip down to the main changes. The only thing that changed here for permitted use is that I wanted to call out the fact that even though a use is permitted from the table of land uses, that it may or may not be subject to approval based on the height and other, you know, like the reflection, the reflectiveness of the roof and, you know, use. So I just added that in there because it doesn't really show up anywhere else in the table of land uses, and it's good for someone to be able to see that. Otherwise, this is essentially the meat of the change here, the review authority. And then it's separated by, number one is that AD Airport Subdistrict, which is the area described as within the fence, although technically speaking, not everything is within the actual physical fence, but it is on property owned by the city of Sanford and managed by Sanford Airport.
So I'm going to interject right here. So when Allison was here a month ago, that is what Allison told us. If that is truly what Allison is requesting and you guys agree with, we will need to also change a section of this ordinance, because in the ordinance, it says the AD support sub-district, so this is 280-11-9B1, which is the first page. It says all of the land area owned by the city of Sanford or private property owners that is used for airport runways, airport runway direct access activity. This area is commonly referred to as the area within the fence or the area with controlled access. So Allison told us that even though it says within the fence, it really means all land owned by the airport. But if that's the intent, we have to remove or the area within controlled access, because the area with controlled access is only within the fence.
So it's, okay, good to see. Go ahead, Jack.
Sorry, if I could just ask a clarifying question. Can we see, the airport development district is bigger than the sub-district that you're talking about? Can I see on a map somewhere the difference?
Yep, I can pull it up.
Not much land that totally covers. That'd be a pain, I'd just like to see.
No, it's great.
No, it's okay. Don't know why it's taking so long. There we go. Jordan's about to leave and everything's already gone.
And just to clarify, if it's not within the fence, per se, but it's still in the airport development zone, it could still come to the planning board, is that correct?
So as we discussed last meeting, we would refer to the normal site plan area of change stratifications. So for instance, you guys only see projects that are greater than 30,000 square feet.
So the normal rules would still apply.
The normal rules of site plan, and there's a lot of other things that fall under that.
That sounds like I'm going to clarify.
But, right. Okay, so you can see this light purple here. That is the entire AD Airport Development Zone, and then this parcel that is highlighted in yellow is the airport.
Fence.
Within the fence, that's the AD support. Sorry, I need to open. That is the AD Airport Subdistrict, and everything outside of that yellow but within that light purple is the AD Support Subdistrict.
Does that include the parcel right across the street from Walmart?
Yes.
Yeah.
It does, that is within the fence.
No.
No, it's outside the fence.
It's outside the fence currently. In the future, if Allison wants to pursue a terminal or a gate access there, she'll need to actually update her Ultimate Airport Layout Plan, which then has to come back before you anyways, in order to then bring that within the fold of the AD Airport Subdistrict.
Potentially, if that project comes to fruition, that project would come before the entire of the site plan process and then potentially the planning board.
Yes, correct. It would come still before, definitely before Site Plan Review Committee, and then I've worded the changes to the ordinance to, you know, always allow the Site Plan Review Committee to be able to refer to you if they feel like it's too complicated, or maybe if, we talked a lot about, you know, different roadway access points, but I kind of had a hard time describing that in a short verbiage, so I think if we leave it up to Site Plan Review Committee, if, you know, Matt Preventer or whoever is the Assistant City Engineer is doing traffic analysis and says the traffic numbers are too high, the planning board should really do this, then it'll just come to you.
And I also think it's, a lot of it happens if we change that line I just pointed, because if it's truly all of the airport land, it includes this whole parcel as outlined in yellow. But if it's only the area within the controlled access, that's within the fence, so then there's, if it's a new access point, it would be partially outside the fence, partially inside the fence, so that would follow the normal process. So I think this is a key area for discussion on whether we want to change that or not.
We'll go back to the text, but I have that open a tab still, so if you need to see it again. Okay, so within that AD Airport Subdistrict, basically it's saying that the planning board must approve updates or amendments to the Ultimate Airport Layout Plan, updates or amendments to the AD Support Subdistrict Boundary or Exhibit A, this is what Allison referred to as Exhibit A of the UALP, which is also known as the Airport Official Property Map. My understanding is that in order for this to change, this also needs to change, but I think it's good to kind of call it out just in case maybe FAA changes their rules at some point, so anytime we're changing where that sub-district is, it's going to come before you. And then any project as requested by either the Site Plan Review Committee, the Airport Advisor Committee, or the Planning Director. Following that, all other projects would be reviewed by the Site Plan Review Committee, assuming they are over 5,000 square feet. Sorry, the first line is just saying that before it comes to you, it will also come to the site plan, so the UALP will also come before Site Plan Review Committee before it gets to you. That's this first line here, basically saying these three come to you. The next one is if it's over 5,000 square feet, it will come to you. If it's changing any, I'm sorry, not to you, to Site Plan Review Committee. If it's changing any roadways, taxiways, helipads, as included in the UALP, it will go to Site Plan Review Committee. Construction or reconstruction involving underground utility connections or stormwater management installations. So these two things have the potential to be smaller than 5,000 square feet, but it would probably be something that we would still want to review at a technical level, so that's why I called them out specifically. And then the next one, this was actually a holdover from previous standards, we had called this out previously, that any change in a pre-existing nonconforming use. We discussed last week, or last meeting, we don't think there are any currently, but in the case of a future, you know, nonconforming use, if things change, that would go before the Site Plan Review Committee, and then again, if you all decide that there's something in general that you want the Site Plan Review Committee to start reviewing more of, you can add that. Again, the Airport Advisor Committee or the Planning Director can always elevate. We're kind of working the hierarchy down. The next level is just the Planning Director or his or her designee would include anything that's less than 5,000 square feet. These two are already in existence right now, so they're not really changing. They're currently in the ordinance as being able to be reviewed and approved by the Planning Director. I don't know if this is something we even, we didn't not talk about this last meeting, but if that's something we're even doing in operation right now with the change in the ownership or management of a use previously approved under the section?
I don't feel that would need to remain.
Okay. But I think right now Allison or the airport manager is approving all lease agreements, potentially with the city manager, but it's not really involving the Planning Director if it's just change in ownership, change in management, so we'll probably strike that.
And then before we go on, the, just so there's no confusion, the 5,000 square foot is reviewed by the Planning Director or designee, that is part of the Site Plan Chapter already, so that's already happening citywide. We're just calling it out specifically for this one as well. So that's really the way it's been for six or seven years at this point. It was just because we're listing it here, we're repeating ourselves, but that's not a new rule, that's been that way for years at this point.
Okay, and then next, any building structure or use considered to be accessory? So that would be, I don't know if they use sheds at the airport, but can you list some other accessory uses?
It could be as simple as a small generator pad for a standby generator, could be, while I don't, I don't think there's any sheds, but it could be somebody needs a shed for a snow blower or something, small stuff like that.
So in the normal Site Plan Review, I think those are actually relegated to the Code Enforcement Director. Right now, that's the same person, but regardless, I think just having things go through the Planning Director makes sense because the Ultimate Airport Layout Plan is a little bit vague, that in the future, if someone needs to like interpret it, it would be the Planning Director, because the Planning Director has talked with you all that approved that plan. So I don't know that the Code Enforcement Officer will always kind of be in the know specifically about the Ultimate Airport Layout Plan, just so happens that they're one person right now, so. It's not a big change.
And that provision's been in the ordinance for 15 years, so that's not a new provision.
The next section is about submission requirements. So this was basically added because So this was basically added because we want to talk about abutter notices. I did actually increase the radius to 500 feet because I measured the distance between, let's pull it up. So let's see, for instance, if we're talking about a new hangar, we'd be measuring 500 feet from them, and that was kind of the distance, I think, from one runway to the next, seemed to be 500. So that way, if a hangar is built over here, these guys would definitely be alerted. Normally, the distance is 250 feet. We talked about last meeting whether the scale was correct, because airplanes are so large and the hangars are therefore so far spread apart. It seems like anyone within 500 feet probably should be alerted. That's up to you guys, again, for a review. But in the other areas of the airport, I think, again, if something, like here's a little lot right here, basically, another 500 feet, basically is one or the next parcel over is captured.
And again, currently, the ordinance would go from the 1,000 acre parcel line, not the individual leased area for the hangar. So we're defining it as the leased area for the hangar, not the 1,000 acre property line.
Why don't we do that with other parcels?
With what?
Why don't we do something like that with other parcels?
Once we get to the ordinance provisions and we, we do that, we, it's, it's up for discussion, absolutely. There aren't a lot of huge, large parcels in Sanford where...
Oh, wait a minute. I mean, I was looking at doing a driveway at the Orchard, and my property goes down just behind Moody's and along Main Street, and I had to notify hundreds of people that are not within that area.
So I, I would agree that when we get to the ordinance provisions, that would definitely, it'll be hard to craft an ordinance to solve individual problems like yours, because in this case, we're saying leased area, your leased area is your 200 acres or how much land you own there. So we could, we could try to get creative and word it, project area, or, when we get there, I'm sure we can get creative to help in situations like that.
This is easier to do quicker because a new parcel is created for each of these. So as we've normally been operating from the edge of the parcel, it's just that at the time that they are submitting, the parcel isn't created yet. So like tonight's project is going to be kind of like where this, I think it's about there, or maybe it's in between where that foundation is, but the parcel's not there yet. So it's not something they can click on in our system and have the system generate the abutters notices yet, until after they're approved. And then the assessor gives them a parcel, and then they have a parcel in the GIS system. So that's why it's been difficult to allow them to measure from 500 feet, because we measure from the parcel line, and the parcel line's not there yet. So I've kind of worded it in the ordinance and said to say, from the, from the existing or proposed boundary of the subplot, or the area of proposed use as determined by a lease agreement with the airport and submitted with the application. So we'd be requiring a copy of that lease agreement, which we don't currently, right now, and we'd be able to see where they're proposing that parcel line to be and measure it from that.
And again, just for clarification, the parcel lines that show up on the GIS after that's built are technically not parcel lines. We identify each hangar with a separate map and lot number for tax collection purposes, but these hangars are on leased land, which means the city of Sanford owns the ground under them. They're just leasing the airspace above. So those parcel lines are not truly parcel lines. Those, those are there just to identify which structure is which map and lot number for tax collection purposes.
Okay. So otherwise, the submission requirements are similar to other site plans, and I've called out those specific sections here that definitely need to be submitted. And then also, there's a, a large number, and again, that, that chapter is likely to change in the future, the Site Plan Submission Chapter, basically, but I've added in that the Planning Director can request supplemental information. It's basically just trying to streamline the process of what they're submitting and allow these smaller projects to be expedited, essentially, since they're already shown on the ultimate airport layout plan. The next section just says that everything that's in that other area, aside, you know, outside the fence, would be following the normal Site Plan Review Committee and Planning Board Review Process. This is the section that we're cutting, as we've just updated it, and then these, sorry, scrolling too far. Okay, so prohibited uses, that has not changed. That's in every section of the zoning ordinance, just says if it's prohibited, if it doesn't show up on the table of land uses, it's prohibited. Instead of listing everything that's prohibited, that's how we handle it in Sanford. Space and Bulk Standards, we talked about this last meeting, that we were going to strike the floor area ratio requirement, because we already have a maximum impervious surface requirement. I didn't change those standards or the numbers at all. I did add in here just something to clarify that impervious area includes buildings, pavement, and gravel parking areas. That's a state statute, but people are often confused that gravel counts towards impervious area. So as we continue to have more and more developers coming from out of state, especially at an airport, where they're, who knows where they're flying in from, and they might build an, a hangar here, makes sense to make things as clear as we can. I also added the 60 feet are subject to FAA regulations. So now it's in there twice, basically, to make sure that your building's not too high. And that's it. This was just a minor text change to kind of clean it up. We continue to add performance standards to this chapter, and so it doesn't make sense to me to call out which ones are relevant when more and more are added all the time. We'll just say the whole article and allow them to go and see what is relevant. It's basically groundwater protection standards, watershed protection standards, marijuana standards, things that don't really apply would be the ADU requirements are in there, the affordable housing density bonuses in that section, but those don't apply because residential's not allowed. It's just as easy to cite the whole chapter, rather than list out everything that may or may not apply. Okay, so Jamie mentioned changing Section B.
B1, right?
At the top. And we, I made one edit to the Planning Director Authority to strike the change in ownership or management of a use previously approved under this section. We also talked briefly for a moment that we probably should add a provision in here to require those as-built plans be submitted, since that seems like that's going to be a requirement coming from Allison, from every project. So I can add that in to the submission requirements, I guess, section.
Yeah, I think that one really makes sense.
Yeah.
Write it down while everybody knows where everything is.
Right.
And remember that thought, because when we get to revise on the overall Site Plan Chapter, it's probably going to be something that I suggest we add there as well for citywide projects. We're not there yet, but just, just remember that.
Does that make sense to everybody?
As-built?
Yeah. Okay.
So it'll be as-built plans submitted to the Airport Manager at the completion of construction?
Do you want it to just go to Airport Manager? If we want to be consistent, if we're going to put this in the...
I would say to the Planning Department, because it would be good for us to have those as-built as well, and then we can get them to the Airport Manager.
Okay, that sounds good. So as-built plans submitted to the Planning Department at the completion of construction.
And then I had one other comment that I haven't discussed yet. In 282-2, which is the definition chapter, definition section of the chapter, we currently define Airport Master Plan, but we are changing all the references to the Airport Master Plan to the Airport Ultimate Layout Plan. So I just think we should strike Airport Master Plan and replace it with Airport Ultimate Layout Plan.
Good, I was going to ask that question.
Were you really?
Yeah.
Sorry, I stole your thunder.
Okay, you're the boss.
As Aaron's finding that, we did advertise this for public hearing. I think I'm almost going to recommend that we keep the public hearing open. So Allison, Navia, the Airport Manager, did not get a chance to see this. We advertised as a public hearing, but we didn't have the document available for the public to review. Where the document was created literally an hour before the meeting, I think it would be wise to keep the public hearing open and then actually make any decisions at the following meeting.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
We have to advertise like three weeks in advance of a meeting, so sometimes we advertise for things before they're really...
Then they had to go on vacation.
Again, then we go on vacation, so it happens.
So I think we just have to go back to the comment that you brought up. Or did we get that cleared up?
About the definition of airport...
280-11-9-B1, yeah, this one.
So it was brought up, but I don't think we've discussed where you guys feel it should be yet.
What was your recommendation? This was, we have an inconsistency, right?
So I guess I don't have a recommendation either way. I will say that historically, it's been defined as within the fence, physically within the fence. There will be implications if we say it's outside of the fence, because again, the airport land is 1,000 acres-ish, and it is far from that that's fenced in. So we would be allowing a lot more area owned by the city to go with the abbreviated review process. I'm not saying that's a good or a bad thing, I just, this is a point that I think we at least should discuss, because there is potential implications from it. And we did, last time, have some comments about access points and should those be more scrutinized. Again, currently, any access point would potentially come to you guys, because it's outside the fence and inside the fence. So if we say it's actually airport boundary, not within the fence, then that would allow potentially more projects to, to not have to come to you guys. Again, I'm not saying that's good or bad, I just think it's, it's point of discussion.
Well, just to clarify though, it would still have to be in the air, ultimate airport layout plan.
Correct.
So it would still have to be approved in advance. So it isn't just a carte blanche, everything outside would automatically avoid us.
Absolutely.
And if they wanted to change that, that process still comes to us.
Absolutely.
So.
Yes, and also Allison had made some comments about the properties that kind of toe the line or cross that line, the terminal, I think, is the building. You know, they've tried to do certain events or things that would probably not be allowed on an airport, and I think we want to consider those within the AD Airport Sub District, the, within the fence sub-district, so that the Airport Manager continues to have control over events that happen on those properties?
I would say it's safe to say the Airport Manager would request that we strike or the area with controlled access.
Yeah, I think that's what we discussed the last meeting.
And if we're going to do that, I would actually probably reword the, where it says "refer to as the area within the fence," and just make the area owned by map R1665, or, or within the city boundaries, just because, or the area within the fence could still cause confusion to future personnel. So if we're going to make it truly the boundary lines, I think we should word it such.
Even the sentence before that.
What?
Even the sentence before that, you know, "used for airport runways and airport runway direct access activities." You know, the solar panel farm isn't...
I mean, I feel this definition was pretty clear before, that it meant the true airport.
Yeah.
So essentially, we're changing...
Yeah.
...that, that language completely.
I think what we're referring to is also already referenced in my edits, in that it's the Exhibit A of the ultimate airport layout plan, which is the Airport Official Property Map.
Mm-hmm.
So that's a part of Allison's submittal to FAA. She has to show all the properties that are owned. So I think those two boundaries are the same. I will refer to Allison and find out, because then we can just refer to that.
So I mean, you could change this to what you just said, Exhibit A.
Yep.
As a, a simple way of defining that, because currently, some of the land owned by the airport acreage is in discussion of breaking off. So if, and that is shown on the Airport Ultimate Layout Plan, but that way, if boundaries change in the future, we don't have to amend this. It goes by Exhibit A, which would change with that ultimate layout plan.
You're not talking about the yellow outlined area, you're talking about the entire AD zone? I'm just trying to clarify.
So we're talking about the yellow outlines.
The 1,000 acre parcel.
That is the yellow, okay. So you're just changing the language to clarify that. I just want to make sure I understand.
So it's, it's essentially three quarters of the, of the purple zone.
Most of it.
But there are about, I'm going to say, about 10 outside lots. All of the commercial activity on Gate House Road, and then there's six or seven lots that front on Main Street.
Well, these are not within it currently.
That's in the AD zone.
Correct.
But not in the airport sub-district.
Correct.
Makes you confused.
Does this cause any conflicts with the Airport Master Plan, or whatever it's going to be called in the future?
So Allison is currently in the process of updating the ultimate layout plan to, I mean, she came in and asked us to do this at the same time she's doing ultimate layout plan, so she's trying to get everything consistent.
So the master plan goes away, it's replaced by the ultimate layout plan?
The terminology for Airport Master Plan went away about 17, 18 years ago. It's, it's been called an ultimate layout plan for a while. If you look at the old plans, they're called master plans. Even the one we did three years ago, five years ago, says master plan on it, but at that point, the, the industry had changed the terminology, but we kept it master plan. But at this point, Allison is requesting we update the terminology.
There's one other provision that I did not include tonight, because we hadn't advertised technically for this section, but the airport clear zone and airport protection overlay zone are technically different sections in the ordinance. So the airport is right above it here, you can see the standards that we just reviewed, and then the, the overlay zones are the next section. And we did actually briefly discuss a, adding to the overlay a tree clearing provision or tree limit landscaping height, which is something that we implement on all new site plans, but if we add that to this section, then we allow Allison some provision to go in, request trees be trimmed.
Right, that's what she was talking about the last time, because that, and that's definitely outside the zone, oh, the fence, outside the fence.
Ben, could you pull up my screen, please? So on this map, the two purple ovals, that is the, what Aaron is referring to now. So what Allison is requesting is really not even the full inner circle, but probably, I'm going to say potentially add another circle, but making it so that, especially for the runway approach areas, which is the black trapazoids, that is where we really need to make sure trees are topped. And currently, we don't have a formal, there's, there's federal law, but we still have some property owners when we come and say, hey, you need to cut that tree down, not like that. So she, she talked to us about trying to put some language in to make it so that it's actually in their deeds, that they know that those trees have a limited height, and when they hit it, they need to be removed, type of thing.
Yeah, I mean, it makes sense, but, so for this one, we would probably have to pub, have a...
I'll advertise another public hearing regardless.
Public hearing for that one.
If we keep this open and continue it, it's, either way is fine. But yeah, it wasn't technically listed as the separate... But yeah, it wasn't technically listed as the separate section of ordinance.
And I think that's fine, I just want to make sure we're.
And, and we can see, Allison, I, I think she's referring to more of the black areas, but before we write anything, we just need to confirm that I interpreted her sentence correctly.
Yeah, I agree.
That tree removal, is that the cost of the resident or that's part of the city? We're not going to discuss that right now, but it's.
I think it's usually the resident.
I've seen both.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll leave it at that. There have been cases where I know the residents have done it on their own, and there've been cases where they really didn't want to, so we did it for them.
Right.
I think if we had clear language, it would help in that.
Absolutely. That's, yeah, not seeing that here, yeah.
Yeah, because right now, if all we're doing is relying on the federal law, which you don't really have jurisdiction to enforce anyways.
I don't, as code officer, correct.
Okay.
Luckily, our property owners in Sanford are generally speaking very easy to get along with, so there's been very little issues with that, but it, it would still be good to have specific language.
Okay, so we'll bring this back, I think. Oh, we have to have a public hearing, actually.
Have to have a public hearing still.
I'll leave.
Okay. I'll declare the public hearing open and open it up to any, any proponents of this ordinance change? Somebody on Zoom? Okay. Any opponents that would like to bring up any issues with this ordinance change? Anyone who has any general questions or comments about the ordinance? All right, we're going to leave the, we're going to leave the public hearing open and we will bring this back for the next meeting. Thank you. Thanks, Aaron.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, so moving on to Planning Director's report.
We have posted our open Planning Board Member position. I don't know how many applications we've received. I know we've received at least one. So within the next month, the City Council should be making a appointment to fill that position for the unexpired term. I believe it's just for the remainder of this year. We have still had quite a few pre-apps coming through. We've received a few applications. So status quo, we're, we're remaining to, to stay pretty steady. As always, I want to thank you guys and the staff. I think we're doing all a pretty, pretty good job at, at managing development in the current status.
Any else? Okay, open up Communications, the board.
So with Crystal's departure, you need a, somebody to back you up, right?
Yes. So I, I guess I'd like to nominate, I'd make a motion for Jase Clark to be the vice chair.
You okay with that?
Yeah.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor? Five zero, Jase, you're now the vice chair.
He's not smiling as big as I hoped.
That's why I said second right away. Big boost in pay.
Yeah, yeah, you get twice as much as you got last meeting. All right. So just looking, as we're looking through ordinances and talking about the, trying to make things consistent, I really, I mean, I really appreciate that because we, you know, it makes it easier for us to look at things and, and not say, well, how do we do it for this, this type of project versus another type of project? So maintaining those, that consistency across the board is going to be really helpful for whoever comes in behind us. All right, anybody else have anything? Second? All in favor? Five zero? All right, have a good night, everyone.